Okay, board members, it's now your time to make comments, reports on things that you've done that's worthy, you know, to the board and to the audience. So Dave's looking at me, so Dave, do you have something that you've done over the last...
I cannot look at you and not have to talk.
Oh, well, I know, I see the enthusiasm you have, though.
Well, I'm excited.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
And forgive me for arriving late, but I saw eighty kids today. And, of course, you do that all the time, but I'm putting braces on them. Life at light speed. So Dr. Riley, can you help me just for a moment? And I apologize, I left my notes in my car. And the short, and I'll cue you whenever I want you to come in with the correct names. But not too long ago, I went to a meeting on the Montgomery campus where students who received scholarships were acknowledging the donors. And it's how I get paid for this job, because I get to meet the students and the donors, and it's inspiring. And so while there, I was invited to go over to the Digital Marketing Center, or something like that. Okay, so technologically, I'm trying to leap into the eighties myself personally. You know, on my TV, I have a rope start, you know, to get a thing going. Anyway, you walk into this small converted kitchen essentially, and they have six seventy-inch flat-screen monitors of which they can monitor their activity in social media, Internet rankings, and stuff I never heard of because they use letters to describe it, and I'm clueless. But I took a look at that, and, you know, in my business, it's really, I only count cheeks and seats. You know, that's the name of the game. If there's nobody there to play with, what am I doing here? And so when somebody comes by and wants to sell me an ad or tell me how to promote my business, they promise pretty pictures, but they'll not be held accountable for the result. And I saw a presentation where some people working for Montgomery under the direction of Dr. Riley, they count results. I mean, they count results like you wouldn't believe they count results. And so now, and so what I did is I said, great, there's some people I know who needs to hear this. And it was strictly a bait-and-switch deal, because I wanted some people, some business owners and some doctors I know to see this presentation, and then I'm going to rope them into making donations to the foundation to increase scholarships. Just a little plan I have, Nicole's helping me. We did pretty well last time, we're going to do even better. Talked to some people today, they're lining up. But anyway, so I convinced, it was easy to have these people from the Digital Marketing Program do a presentation to these people, and I now have more people that want to hear about it, because I got my story down better, my sales pitch. And these three people came, business owners, very successful, capable, able, and they saw something that knocked their hat in the creek. They saw the cutting edge. And I'm going to tell you one project that was done by this group. But first, I would like Dr. Riley to remind me, the three people, I'll let you say them all, although I can remember first names.
...Brian Mullin, Mullin, who is our executive director for... and Randy Newt, and Sam Biggert.
Yes. I remembered Brian Mullin, Randy, and Sam, but last names escape me. But what they did, one, an example, this is just one example. Getting ready at the start of the semester, right? Okay, let's see if we can generate some students. So what they did was, they took a census of a thousand students that they could identify within a two-mile radius of Montgomery College, who had a very high GPA, already approved for FAFSA, not enrolled. And they created essentially what I would describe kind of a social media contact program, and spent tens of dollars doing it. Okay? Which got the three people that I had there last time, it was a head snapper. They spent tens of dollars doing it and generated a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars to the college. Quick, what's the ROA on that? Is that acceptable?
That's good.
And so I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Riley and the work that her staff has done in that Digital Marketing Program. I'm going to have community members, this is just perfect, you know, that I can rope in, get them tied into the foundation, and life at light speed is a lot of fun. And so thank you, Dr. Riley, very much. Good job.
Excellent. Anyone else?
Yes, I want to thank Dr. Ardern. I attended the Texas Open Innovation Conference, and it was a small group but well organized. And Amanda Edwards, Houston City Councilman, she was very passionate, because Houston was dumped, or, you know, they didn't make the Amazon cut. So she was kind of upset about it. And the way she summed it up in her speech was that the like of, when you look at what the city of Houston, it's number one in energy, and number one, and, as she said, healthcare, but it's number thirty-four in venture capital. And she made the comment, she says, "The Houston elimination," in so many words, "was due to the lack of education, transportation, and stagnation, and the only consolation is innovation." So I want to say thank you. And she said, "It was another instance where Lone Star undersold and overdelivered." Thank you very much, and I'll say this, Steve don't take, but they always talk about these new innovators, these startup companies, which will eventually become IPOs. So I just thought, let you know that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to, before we leave, I want to congratulate the students who are here witnessing government in action. The, I just wanted to say that when I was in community college myself, not this one, but in Texas, we, it was a government instructor who kind of got me encouraged, a lot of us encouraged us to be involved. And that instructor was so good that several people that came out of his class ran for office, and, I guess, included myself, you know, even though it just, you know, of course, I need to get back to him and tell him, he told me the whole story, but, you know, I really appreciated his efforts. And the reason I want to mention it to you guys, because I want to encourage you to keep an eye out and stay involved and follow us as much as you can, you can even do it on TV, you know, I mean, on the computer online, so, thank you. What's the name of the instructor again? What was that? Who was, several classes, or is it?
Yeah, I... Tice.
Oh, Tice.
Don, Dr. Tice.
Yeah, well, tell Jay he starts to need to come back to the meetings again.
There you go. Anyway, tell him I said thank you for sending you guys out here.
Okay, anyone else?
I got tonight the final copy, or nearly the final copy, of Leanne Knudt's book that she's writing about grit, Students Who Triumph Over Adversity. If you have, if you have a story where that's happened, please get it to me, but in about a week, because at that point, I have to then give to her some form of all these stories. Take my word for it, writing a book is extremely hard to do. It is tedious, it is hard, you have to be accurate. You can't write off the top of your head, I mean, accuracy, devilish. But anyway, here it is.
All right, great.
If you have a story, give it, send it to me, please.
One thing I want to mention, Quentin Wright, our new college, Seventh College, I had an opportunity over the last, I guess, two or three weeks, to attend what I call Town Hall meetings out in the community. And to me, the purpose of the Town Hall meetings have been to make the community aware of this new college concept, find out what the citizens would like to see in this new college, and get any feedback that they may have. The last meeting was in Acres Homes. We had a meeting with one large church that had guaranteed us seven or eight thousand students. We had a meeting with the mayor's office, what day, Tuesday, because the mayor is working on complete communities, and there's several of them around the city. And so they are asking us and telling us about things that they know of interest, you know, from their standpoint of complete communities. And I look at this, and I don't know about, you know, other individuals or Quentin, getting ahead of the game, finding out what people want and et cetera, to me is a great idea. The first thing it does to me is it tells the community that we are, you are a major customer, and we want to hear what you want. Not only the positive things, but also anything that you think we could do better. The thing that surprised me mostly, because I know a lot of the folks, you know, in those meetings, and they can be quite critical, you know, at times about things that you're doing. And I have not heard any negative comments at all. Am I accurate, Quentin? You know, everyone thinks it's a great idea, and everyone wants to work as a team to make sure that the Seventh College concept works for the benefit of the community. And on top of it, he's still getting additional requests, you know, to explain away, you know, what the plans are. So I want to give him kudos on making sure, and then the nice thing about it, Quentin reacts real quickly. Someone calls him, he's ready to go the next day, sometimes the same day. And I sent him an email one Friday night, and I told him to answer it Monday. He sent me an email back about nine o'clock Friday night, and I said, hell, I work all the time, let's do it now. So that's the kind of attitude he has, and I really appreciate his efforts, his enthusiasm, and et cetera. But I can say the same thing about a lot of other Lone Star folks, so, thank you very much. Okay, if there are no other board member items, Helen, do we have any citizens wishing to speak to the group?
We have three tonight.
Who?
Three tonight.
Okay.
John Bergduff.
Good evening.
Hi, John.
Hi, how are you? Good evening, I am John Bergduff, representing the American Federation of Teachers. That socioeconomic status has a profound impact on students' probability of success in school has been well documented. From underfunded and understaffed schools, to housing insecurity, to poor access to quality health care and proper nutrition, to institutionalized racism, our poorer communities, often communities of color, face challenges that stack the deck against the academic success of their young people. For these reasons, the leadership of our union wishes to express our support for the renewed commitment that Lone Star College is making to serve the educational needs of our most vulnerable neighbors in the southern part of our district. We want to take this opportunity to express our best wishes to Dr. Quentin Wright and the faculty and staff of the new Lone Star College Houston North, and to pledge our support. Tonight, we would like to talk to you a bit about the Community Schools Movement. Working collaboratively with the administrations of public K through twelve school districts, a number of our sister locals in the AFT are implementing a new model for what a public school can be in underserved communities. The model, called the Community Schools Model, is moving the needle on student achievement significantly. Although this model has been applied so far only to elementary and secondary schools, and college students are different, we believe there are lessons that we at Lone Star can draw on. We have a community school right here in Houston. Houston ISD, in collaboration with the Houston Federation of Teachers, an AFT local, has substantially redesigned Durkey Elementary School, which is just south of Aldine. So what is a community school? The hallmark of a community school is the incorporation of wraparound services. These services are tailor-made to the unique situation of the school and the surrounding community. Examples of services that may be provided include, one, academic services like tutoring provided by qualified teachers who are paid for overtime work outside of school hours; two, enrichment activities for the students out in the community; three, medical services like primary, vision, dental, mental health, and nutritional services; four, adult education classes for family members of students and other people in the community; five, early childhood education, and at the high school level, childcare for students with children of their own; six, career and technical education; seven, integration of transportation resources so that the school is accessible to the community; eight, intensive counseling services for students caught in the trauma of violence, substance abuse, and institutional racism often associated with poverty. This counseling includes restorative practices that teach students and their families how to deal with conflict in a positive collaborative way. At Durkey Elementary, as students learned about these practices, the number of students sent to the principal's office dropped to zero within one year. Community schools are committed to a strong academic curriculum with support from community partners. Academic rigor is not zoned by zip code. Community college, uh, community schools, excuse me, engage families and communities. They receive services, but they are also integrated into the decision-making process in planning and implementing the school. Finally, community schools are governed at the local level. The people who most directly see the challenges and needs faced by the students are the teachers and the support staff working in the school. Therefore, faculty and staff at the local level are incorporated into the decision-making process in meaningful ways. So what outcomes are being seen in community schools? Schools transform from low-performing to high-performing, graduation rates rise dramatically, also students miss fewer class days because health and nutrition needs are being addressed. Family members incorporated into the life of the school can better support their children's learning. Students stay in one school because families don't have to move to obtain needed services. Community schools require a major investment in resources and imagination, but they are making a difference across the country. We describe community schools in more depth in the newest edition of our newsletter, The Advocate, which will be coming out next week. The principles that make community schools work for younger students, we believe, also will make a difference for our college students. And Houston North is a great place to give these principles a try. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, John.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, since I've been here, some of you know me, some of you do not, so I'll just go over a little, a few results of a new survey on diversity that'll wake everybody up. The first time, the first thing that Lone Star needs to do is add four hundred and two full-time Latino faculty today. The next thing that they need to do to make room for these shortfall of Latinos is to fire five hundred and eighty-three white faculty members today. This is what the survey points out to reach a point of parity. I asked Dr. Head if he believed in parity, and he smiles at me with that Cheshire smile on his face, and says, well, it depends on what it means. I said, well, it usually means equality, it usually means equity, and parity, based on how I interpret it, as far as diversity, means that if you have fifty percent Latinos student population, or in your service area, the college needs to represent a picture of that community, which would be fifty percent Latino faculty. He and I disagree, and evidently, he does disagree along with the EEOC, because they side with my interpretation. I have a forty-five-year background in human resources. I formed a company called Joseph Chris Partners in nineteen seventy-seven. I have a degree from Texas Uni, University of Texas, worked with two major Fortune Five Hundred companies, and formed a company called Joseph Chris Partners in Kingwood, Texas. The company was recently recognized as being in the top fifty best recruiting firms in the world. My daughter now owns the company. It's forty years old, and the company is legendary in the commercial residential real estate industry. Joseph Chris Partners has provided thousands of top executives to public and private firms throughout the world. To give you a historical background of my bad relationship with Lone Star College, I began working with them in two thousand and two. They recruited me to help them build and attract Latino students. We did so, even though after meeting Dr. Person, I very quickly got an idea that there was a diversity problem at that school. I worked with them, developed a top program. I quit during the middle of it because of issues with her. They called me back, re-recruited me, and I began to help them in a way that the position was described to me personally. I volunteered for the position, never got paid any money for doing so. I did it because I wanted to help my culture and the people that are discriminated by this college. Well, I sent a report, or an email update, to Dr. Carpenter, made suggestions on improving their diversity program, told him about the low representation of Hispanics in Kingwood and throughout the system. He blew his gasket, decided that he was going to meet me head-on, and I said, well, come on. He said that I should talk to him through his attorney, Monty Jacobs. This was not acceptable to me, it proved that he was a racist person, didn't want to treat me like a professional. So, here we stand today, Dr. Head. You were charged with EEOC systemic discrimination for your entire system. Tell us what the status is in five years. You never hear much from Dr. Head. Like a lot of other things, they're not transparent, and they're not in compliance. Perhaps this speech will help those that are still here. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mario, are you in a position to respond to? Okay. All right, well, thank you then.
Hi, my name is David Mally, I'm a student at Lone Star College, and I wanted to speak broadly about the issue of how the college handles student illness.
Talking to the mic, they can't hear you.
Sure. I don't want to target anyone publicly, so I'll just kind of speak broadly about what my experience has been. I was sick for a few days in February. I gave my professor a doctor's note, and her response was to tell me that I should have planned ahead. I went to the dean, and I was told that ninety percent of notes that students turn in are fake anyway, so as far as she was concerned, they're all fake. Unless the faculty wants to help you, you're out of luck. I went to a vice president, and I was told that it would violate academic freedom for him to get involved in the situation. I tried to meet with the next administrator, and I was told it would be several weeks before I commute with them. What I was also told by the vice president is that unless it's something that you can register with students with disabilities, there's really no protection at Lone Star College. I spoke with them, and they told me they just deal with issues that are greater than six months. So if you have the flu, a broken bone, things like that, I mean, unless your professor wants to help you, you're out of luck at the college. I was also told by that administrator that if she were to get sick, she would simply take a sick day. And I thought that was interesting, because faculty, staff, you know, they get these sick days specifically, it's eight hours per month, but students have no protection. If they're sick, I mean, they just have to hope that it's going to work out. And so I'm just asking that Lone Star College look seriously at trying to do more for students that have a short-term illness, a short-term issue, so that there's some kind of protection for them if they get sick. You know, maybe something similar to faculty, where they have so many sick days, hours, something like that would be good. But that's what I came here to say. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, and you know, we can't discuss the item tonight because it's not on the agenda, but we can ask the administration to look back at the facts and go from that particular point. Appreciate you coming to express your views and et cetera. Thank you.
So, I've asked Mario to come up and set the record straight over where we are with the EEOC.
All right, so, under the applicable law, I have to stick to just facts. So fact number one is that there is no pending systemic charge with the EEOC. Fact number two is that there was no finding of culpability or liability by the EEOC. Fact number three is that, again, Dr. Head and I have personally met with the director of the EEOC, and they have no idea who Mr. Ramirez is.
Okay, thank you, Mario. Oh, do we have, that's the last one? Okay, thank you. Board members, at this particular time, we will consider the consent agenda. We have seventeen items on the consent agenda. Are there any items that you would like to have considered separately?
Item eleven, please.
Item eleven?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other items? If not...
Coach?
Yeah, go ahead.
Two, uh, action item one.
Action item one, okay. Okay, assume there are no others. The items that we will consider on the consent agenda are items two through ten, twelve through seventeen. May I have a motion in second, please?
Second, second.
It's been moved and properly second that we, that we vote on items two to ten, twelve through fourteen. All of those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Yeah, or any opposition? Vote by the same sign. No opposition, goes passes. Okay, item one, approve revised policy, section nine of sexual misconduct, that was pulled by...
Yeah, I want to make a call.
Oh, yeah, 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 let's make, yeah, give me a motion on item one, please, a motion on...
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we consider item one. Any unreadiness? And you can go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted this pool to make a comment about it. I've spent most of my life in Michigan, I'm well aware of what's happened on the business of sexual assault at Michigan State University. It's similar to what happened at Baylor. And I'm talking to a fellow today from Michigan State who says they think, for all of the problems they have encountered with sexual assault and the lawsuits, yada, 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 they anticipate that it might cost the school... Yeah, I want, I wanted this pool to make a comment about it. Um, I've spent most of my life in Michigan. I'm well aware of what's happened on business of sexual assault at Michigan State University. It's similar to what happened at Baylor. And I'm talking to a fellow today from Michigan State who says they think, for all of the problems they have encountered with sexual assault and the lawsuits, yada, 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 they anticipate that it might cost the school as much as a half billion dollars. The school obviously did not have its ducks in a row as to what you do about sexual assault, and now they are paying dearly for that. And I make this point because this policy that we have tonight is a work of beauty. When I read it, I discovered that they covered every conceivable angle of sexual assault. How are the different ways that you can encounter that? The multiplicity of ways that you can account it for, and they have in fact dealt with every one of them. It is a remarkable document. We have 100,000 students here, more, I think, than Michigan State has, and yet look at the exemplary record this school has. So I just wanna say to the lawyer team that wrote this up, you have done a terrific job. We count our blessings, and Mario, I asked him at the beginning tonight, who wrote this thing? And he said, "We all did." Would you please point out here in this room, by name, who the people are who helped write this document?
Yes, there's Mason Williams right there, uh, John Gass is back there, Val Gass, Ryan Morris.
Yeah, well, those people deserve congratulations. And when you think about this, think about Baylor, think about Michigan State, and then think about this place. Reset the example. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trowbridge. Any other comments on item one? Hearing none. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 11, Cal. Motion on me, I'm sorry. Motion on item 11.
Sumit.
Second.
Been moved and properly second that we consider item 11. Comments, please.
The, uh, ever-so-controversial topic of pressure washing. Um, I'm not sure if it's historically been in our agenda items, but there was a aspect of this agenda which gave me a basis of comparison for some of the money that we're spending. So after I make my comments, you may decide to never leave it out, to always leave it out again, uh, but I would like, like to ask that it's always been included. So, the historic per annum spend is $2.67.
Yes.
We're asking for a three times per annum increase, um, to $900,000 a year, oh, um, that's able to be spent, not necessarily spent. That amount is also $1 million over the highest of the three qualified bids that we've received in, uh, what was it? 2.2 million over the lowest qualifying bid that was... Why?
We historically have not pressure washed as often as we would like to going forward, so it was expecting some increase in the average annual spend. We have also been doing some of the power washing in-house, so I would say the average historical spend is low to what it could potentially be in the future. I would also mention that this is a not-to-exceed amount, so it does not mean that we will necessarily be spending that amount.
Plus, we've added, um, I don't know how many square feet, right off the top of my head, but we've added at least five new buildings, with several more coming on.
And the buildings, all the concrete, all that?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, even the parking garages, the, uh, the walls of the, the sides of buildings, the parking lots, um, all of the power washing across the entire system.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes.
That helps.
Any other comments? If, all those in favor of adopting item 11, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, okay. Uh, under policy reports and consideration of one item on there for the first reading, uh, board policy manual, section 6.1.4. Are there any questions on that first reading? Mario's here to answer any question that you might have. If not, Jennifer, you're back up.
And I'm actually gonna mention that that average historical spend is on most of the agenda items, so I'm glad to know it's noticed. So the monthly financial statements are presented for the month ending February 28th, 2018. Also included is the quarterly investment report for the period ending February 28th, Just in the first report, you do see that revenues are trending low at 75.8% compared to prior years. Uh, this is predominantly still a reflection, as we've seen in the prior two months, of tuition and fees from enrollment compared to what we budgeted. We had budgeted for an overall 3% increase for the year, and currently, for fall and spring, we're about flat. Going to page two, you also see expenditures as a percent of budget. That is also trending low at 43.3% compared to prior years. Uh, but again, my, uh, main report in this is on page three, the statement of revenues and expenditures, and the forecasted variance from budget. I, there are not significant changes this month from prior month, um, and in the past two months, we had discussed the revenue, um, forecasted, uh, decrease from budget in revenue, predominantly from tuition and fees, and then we also did accompanying budget cuts. One of the main reasons we are not making significant changes to this at this point in time is we are waiting to really see what happens with summer enrollment. So you will see the bottom line here, we are still forecasting to end this year at 16.1%. Uh, from there, I just want to mention a couple of items on the following reports where I continue to include reports of Fund 35, which is the Harvey Fund. We have so far recorded expenses of 10.7 million related to Hurricane Harvey. Our total estimated damages that we are submitting to FEMA is at 39 million, but the actual recognized expenses that we have incurred so far is 10.7 million. And in the balance sheet, we did receive about 10 million in insurance proceeds. There is 373,000 in cash remaining from that, in that fund. And then that concludes my report.
While you're on the topic, we are on schedule. We are gonna open Kingwood in January of 2000, reopen, it's already opened, but reopen fully in 2019.
Yes, let me grab, I had a couple of updates.
Looking at Dr. Pearson, just to make sure she knows.
Yes.
And Anthony, we will open the college fully in 2000.
So, yeah, the updates I wanted to give there is, last month, this board approved us to negotiate and execute the contract with the construction manager, Ansel Bryant. We are hoping, we're expecting that contract to be executed this coming Monday, and then by May 1st, have the build-back design completed for, we are prioritizing three buildings, HSB, CLA, and CLB. Those are the buildings that have the majority of the classroom space, so we're gonna continue to prioritize those buildings, and we want to bring, hope to bring to the board, June 1st, a request to approve a GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price, for at least those priority buildings, to try to make sure we are getting this done quickly. Typically, on a construction project, we will come to you once with a GMP for the entire project. We are going to be, I think, splitting this one, coming to you once in June with these priority buildings, and then potentially coming back again with the remainder, just so we can keep moving. And then while we are doing this, we are still also working on the temporary facilities, so June 1, we expect to occupy the second floor of the library in administration building, um, and July 1, have the modular classrooms set up there. Um, and then, so that's the Kingwood construction update. Accompanying that with FEMA is, as I mentioned, our total estimated damages are now at 39 There, we have done a soil test at Kingwood and a foundation assessment, and we found no evidence of either residual or significant environmental impacts. Uh, we have also done an inspection analysis of the university park parking garage, 'cause that took on water, and found no significant foundation movement there. On our first package to FEMA that we submitted of 22.6 million, there was a meeting with FEMA on March 6, where they then set up a specialized team to try to expedite review of that package, and they sent this team, uh, for a site visit to Kingwood on March 21st. Um, so, there is movement, um, going on that. So as I mentioned, of the 39 million, 22.6 million, excuse me, has been filed with FEMA, and we are all, working on another 11.5 million for the next submission.
I wanted the board to know that all the college presidents, Shaw, the ones that were damaged, Shaw and Sopa, and especially Catherine, because of the, um, extensive damage over it, have done a great job. I'm not telling you it, it, this would stagger most organizations to have this kind of damage and still keep going, and we're paying attention. We, we will get through all this. We always learn lessons. Catherine in particular, if you wanna, if you wonder if she's actually earning her pay, the answer is yes. Um, and Anthony, I mean, I, I, it's taking everybody over at Kingwood to, I, I think, not hold things together, but to keep, keep offering, uh, classes and helping students. We're bringing counselors in at their request. We had a meeting that Anthony called, and we heard them say they wanted more counselors, so we, we're making that happen. Mario worked with Catherine, and they asked for the soil testing so that they could offer intermural, so we've done that. So, um, this is our, this is our number one priority, is to get Kingwood functioning again. I think when they do fully functioning, I know you're functioning, but when you, once you do, you're gonna have a nice remodeled college. So, this is not the way we wanna remodel things, but, uh, I, we will get there. It's just, uh, it's a good lesson for us, us though, about being prepared for the kind of the worst-case scenario, and us thinking through everything from insurance coverage to where we build, what the flood level is, and I saw the new flood proposals from the, or regulations from the city, and how many feet above, uh, flood level, and we're probably going to exceed that. So, um, it's, it's been a learning experience for all of us. We, we will get back on our feet, and, uh, we can, we can handle it financially, so...
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Or Nicole, Dr. Head talked about the Gaylor. Is there any other thing you wanna mention from the foundation?
Nothing else, I would definitely say the report.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, board members, any future agenda items? If not, before we adjourn, I want, I'm gonna do something, but I'm gonna get in trouble, I know. Tonight, there was a gentleman that came in after the introductions were made, and I cannot leave without making sure everybody know that this person is here. Dr. Jim Kane, will you stand, please? Doc, stay, stay up, stay up. Uh, for, for the individuals that do not know, Dr. Kane is the former superintendent of Klein ISD, retired a year, two years ago, and there's a school, high school named after him in Klein. He is a 100% supporter of Lone Star. Uh, he calls me almost every month to find out when the meetings are and et cetera, and he promised me that he would be here on a continuing basis. Thank you, Dr. Kane, and, uh, keep up the good work. So thank you, Dr. Kane. The students that are here from the government class, if you would like to stay and talk to some of the administrators and individuals, feel free to do so. You can also talk to board members if you need their perspective on things, so, so our, our time is your time. If there are no other items, the meeting's adjourned.